Good evening. This is the Radnor Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, August 15th. Quick note that we met in executive session to discuss some legal and personnel issues. And we will start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to open the meeting to invite anybody to speak, any public comment on any issue. There will also be public comment on every issue that we'll take a vote on. So do I see anybody? Please state your name and address.
Yes. Hi, my name's Farren Savitz. I'm the Zero Waste Advocate with Penn Environment. Thank you all for letting me speak today. I'm here to talk about the plastic bag ban ordinance that's been proposed. If you're not familiar with Penn Environment, we're a statewide environmental nonprofit. And I've been working with the EAC for the past few months now on this plastic bag ban ordinance. I've also worked on similar efforts in Philadelphia, in Pittsburgh, in your neighbors Haverford and Easttown, and elsewhere across the state. And I want to focus mainly on one crucial part of this proposed legislation because there are many others who can talk about why this is important, many others who can talk about why plastic bags are an issue. But I want to focus on the fee on paper and reusable bags because without a doubt, it is important for this legislation. The goal of an ordinance like this one isn't just to eliminate plastic. It's to encourage the use of the best environmental alternatives, and that's reusable bags. And that's what the fee does. It helps encourage people to remember their own reusable alternative from home and not to take a paper bag, or a thicker bag, or a compostable bag, or some other alternative that could be offered. And really, what we're trying to do here is create a cultural shift away from just tossing things aside after we use them once for a few minutes, and then grabbing something else and using it again the next time we have to use it. Because if you bring your own bag over and over and over again, you essentially are eliminating the waste that comes with it, not just at the back end, but at the creation of the item. Because even paper bags, which are better than plastic, I want to be clear, paper bags are a better alternative than a plastic bag. But they still have a material cost. They still take water to make. They still take energy to make. They still have to be transported places. But if you bring your own bag over and over again, you eliminate those costs. And the fee is what gets us there. So I do want to urge the use of that fee, and not just for its benefit on the environment, but also because it's what's in use and it's the best model around the state currently. Of the nine plastic bag bans currently in effect in Pennsylvania, two-thirds of them have fee components. Of those loan holdouts, Philadelphia is currently considering adding a fee back to its ordinance. And we at Penn Environment have done a lot of work showing that that lack of fee in Philadelphia's ordinance is causing problems for its implementation, for its rollout, and for its enforcement. And of the places with fees, they do include your neighbors, Easttown and Haverford, who both have fees along with their bans. Additionally, some of your neighbors, like Tridifrin or Lower Marion, are considering their own ordinances that also have this banned fee model. Keeping this fee inside the ordinance along with your ban is an effective way to make sure that in this region, we have similar policies, which is better not just for shoppers and residents, but also for businesses, too. I guess the last thing I want to stress here is that this is a great ordinance. If passed as it's written currently, it would be the 10th plastic bag ban in Pennsylvania, which is a great thing. And not only would it be the 10th, it'd be the fourth biggest to be passed so far. By my estimates, Radnor residents use about 12 million single-use plastic bags every year, which is over 66 tons of plastic waste that we could be reducing. But not only could we reduce them with this fee, we make that cultural shift, we get people to stop using single-use bags altogether, and maybe it bleeds into other parts of daily life. Maybe it gets people to remember a reusable water bottle, or to bring their own straw, or utensils, or bring a reusable container somewhere. This is a great ordinance, and it's also a first step towards reducing waste in other areas. So I ask all of you, don't dilute this bill's effectiveness. Keep it as strong as it can be. Keep that banned fee model, which is in use everywhere around the country, and especially here in Pennsylvania, and also pass this ordinance. It's a great thing for our environment and for Radnor. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other -- is there any other public comment?
Sarah Pillling, 29 Garrett Avenue, Rosemont. I want to thank management and Bill for responding to the call for cooling centers for this summer. This summer ended up being much worse than we even predicted. We now have had 36 days of 90 degrees or over. But as NOAA reported yesterday, NOAA being the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration, it was the hottest nighttime temperature that we have ever had. It rarely, if ever, went below 80 degrees, which means, which is a critical juncture for recovery from heat. So if you have hot days that are in the upper 90s, but the dew point, dew point is humidity and temperature in a formula, where the dew point, like last Thursday, made it 105 degrees. But it only went down to 80 degrees at night. Nothing recovers, not plants, not animals, not insects, and not people. So I tried to not use air conditioning in the last heat wave. I thought, okay, I'm 85 years old, I don't have all the money in the world, very interested in climate change, let me try this. By the fifth day, I was so sick. So the cooling centers for the daytime really could help people. I did not come here because I didn't want to leave my dog in 105-degree temperature, and that's something to figure out later, what we're going to do. But I urge the township to look to the future when I think we need to have evening cooling centers, so that people can get their body temperature down before they go home to bed at night. But anyhow, thank you for responding.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that the public would like to comment on? Not seeing any. Is there any item on the consent agenda that a commissioner would like to remove?
I'd like to remove H, please.
H?
O, please.
I have H and O. Are there others? Okay. We will start with H. Resolution 2022-100, award of bid for road deicing salt for the 2022-23 winter season. Mr. Foster?
Yes, this is the annual bid that we go out to every year with -- caught me off guard. With Newtown Square, they get the bid for us. They go out as a collective. I think it's about maybe 10 or so townships that are involved. So they put out the bid, and we all kind of jump in. And these are the quotes that we receive, and use that goes to the lowest bidder. It's higher than the previous years, but the lowest bidder is still coming in at $75 a ton. So that is what we're putting before the board.
Go ahead. Sorry.
I was going to say, I really have no issue with this, except for the fact that you're talking about winter, which is annoying. But I just wanted to, so I just wanted to take this moment to acknowledge our staff. So on Darby Paley Road, where we have a natural spring that, for years and years and years, since I've lived here since in sixth grade, that natural spring has flooded out, it runs onto Darby Paley Road, and during the winter, it causes, so our staff has to go and we salt it, unless it's a big storm and PennDOT is salting the roads for us. They salt it on a regular basis. And our staff, so Steve Norsini, and Ricky Foster, and Matt Pilati, they all came up with a way to pipe that spring under Darby Paley Road. So we will hopefully no longer need any special deicing over there. And I just want to commend you and the collaboration that you did with PennDOT in order to do that. And now all we need is to get Darby Paley Road repaved. So hopefully, that's going to happen in October. So I just wanted to thank you very much, really creative and a really great way of not only preserving the road surface, but also, I think, will save us money if we're not using our salts over there. So thank you very much.
Any other comment on item H? Moving to item O, resolution 2022-90, authorizing the township to purchase four benches for the Radnor Trail from Victor Stanley in the amount of $10,184. Commissioner Farkey?
Thanks. So I would think that, and I don't know if Tammy's not here, but Bill, if you guys looked at, and possibly, I would think, maybe tabling this and put this out to the public to see if members of the public or organizations, nonprofit organizations, not corporations or private business, would buy these benches and use them and put a plaque on them in honor of a mother, a grandmother, the SPCA, whomever, and that could offset some of that cost, or do some kind of partnership where that would lower some of our costs with that. So was that, that's just my idea, and was that looked at? Thanks.
So I, the genesis of this goes back to several requests from the public over the last year-plus requesting this, including at a previous meeting, we had a member from the public under, public comment come up and ask. So we've been moving in that direction. The locations where these benches are scheduled to go were the same locations that the benches existed prior. They were removed roughly nine years ago. So our approach has been to, to buy, you know, industry-standard, safe benches that need to withstand a certain element of being in the public and being, you know, the wear and tear that goes along with it. And that's the work that Mr. Foster and Mrs. Cohen put into sourcing out what's in front of you tonight. From the funding standpoint, that was not part of what we looked at, honestly, in the past with other ventures, not with park benches. You know, public participation or donations in those regards have not been as successful. But if it's the will of the board, we're happy to give it a shot, and we'll give it our best shot and see how successful we can be.
Great.
And I don't know if Mr. Foster has anything he had to do.
Do you have, I mean, what do you think of that idea, Ricky? Or pardon me, Director Foster?
Definitely something that we could look into. But just to state the point to what Mr. White has stated, we're also looking for consistency throughout the township, and there's, these benches are found throughout the parks.
Sure.
So we have a couple of the benches already on the trail, so we're trying to stay consistent with what's there. Also, some of the parks have these same style benches, and they are very durable, so that's why we wanted to stay with those.
Well, if you take Clemente Crone, yeah, and you would keep those benches. I mean, you couldn't buy your own bench. You'd have to buy that type, that bench, whatever, that model, or that make, or that brand, and that color. That's fine. But we do similar things like that in Clemente Crone Park, where we had a local resident who passed away from COVID, they put a bench there. And that was members of the community, members of Garrett Hill, that did that. So I just didn't know, I believe that we should look at that, that if you could maybe put a plaque on it, it's $500, it's a plaque, it's there for the next 10, 20, I mean, they're durable, they last. And that's something that someone can own, not physically, but they own, that's a piece of them, a piece of their family, as well as it's meaningful to them, and it's also a benefit. It's a win-win. It's a benefit to the township, and it's a benefit to the resident. So with that said, I actually would like, if Public Works, and I know that, I know Tammy's not here, to take a look at that. So I would like to make a motion to table that.
I hear a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Well, can I just, so before I second, can I just ask, do we?
Before you do, would you, can you withdraw your table for more discussion?
Yeah, I'll withdraw until the commissioners can comment on that.
Thank you.
So I just want to make sure with, can we, as a township, can we do that? Do we have a policy in place where we can do that? I know we've got our gift acceptance policy. Could we, can we do something like that, where we would have, it's like naming rights, or?
Well, it's not unprecedented to have various elements in our parks that have been donated or named after, or in some way contributed by members of the public. So, yeah, it's not an unprecedented item. I think it's certainly something we can do. If the donation comes in and it meets the requirements of the gift policy, we'll have to follow that. But, you know, that's why the policy exists, and we will do that.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Sean, I don't think we have to table it. If we pass it and the benches are out there and somebody wants to put a plaque on it, they just have to reach out to the township and inquire the process and the cost. What I don't want to do is table it and open up a discussion for advertising, because you had mentioned companies. I do not want advertising on the trail.
No, no, no advertising would obviously have to be, you know, for someone's, you know, you know, my mom sat here, and you know what I'm talking about. No, Penn Medicine cannot put a--
Well, let's not name specific companies.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Or entities.
But XYZ company can't, it's not a logo with their phone number on it.
So I don't think we need to table it. I think we can pass it tonight, and then, you know, if there is a community member that wants to put a, put a plaque on a bench--
But we don't have what the cost would be, and we don't have any of that stuff in place.
So then, we can do that subsequently. I don't think we need to do that on this piece, on this particular resolution. I think that can be subsequent. I think it's more important to get the benches out there for people to use as they walk the trail.
Bill?
I just, I'll add on that, is that I think it's, it's either, in my opinion, it would be either/or. We're either going to purchase them and they go on the trail, or we're going to table this, don't approve the purchase at this time, and get the word out if there are individuals who would like to support the installation of a bench in honor of somebody. So I don't think that after the bench is there, just sort of in an organic way, it would ever be funded, or very unlikely to be funded.
I think you're right, Mark. Yes.
So I do think that it's either we approve it and move on, or we table it and ask the staff to do some review.
But you're not funding the bench.
Pardon?
You're not funding, you're not funding the bench, you're funding a plaque.
No, but someone could pay for the bench and then put a plaque on it. So as opposed to doing it after the fact, then it's, then it's out there, then it's not done after the fact. It's kind of, it's--
So you're putting a price then on, on the plaque, it'd be the cost of the whole bench?
Could be. I don't know what that is. That's something that I think that staff should, should determine. I don't know that. And if it's not viable, then it's on the agenda at the next meeting.
And then how long are we waiting for somebody?
At the next meeting, Jake. If there's interest--
Mr. Foster, how much is each bench?
It's like $2,500.
Is it just--
It's $2,500.
This has just cost a bench, and Public Works would do the installation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, with that said, I'm going to still make a motion to table it, so.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
And a vote to table the item for more research into offering it as a memorial opportunity for residents. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is tabled. I would like to encourage staff to be able to come back at our very next meeting on this, and we will talk about it again. Thank you. So in, on the consent agenda, other than item H and item O, do I have a motion to pass?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Is in O table? So we're not?
Yes, so other than O and H, oh, sorry, H is in, O is out. Pardon me. Other than O, we are voting on the consent agenda. I have a second. May, I'll take the vote. All in favor, say aye. Consent agenda is passed, and we'll move to the business agenda. Our first item is a presentation. This is the Willow's Park Preserve presentation of the biannual report regarding progress of fundraising efforts and construction. Hi, Will is here with us.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. My name's Will Nord. I'm the Executive Director at the Willow's Park Preserve. Wanted to thank you all for allowing this time to share the progress we are making at the Willow's Park Preserve. Before we begin, we would like to thank the township staff and the Board of Commissioners for your continued collaboration and support of our nonprofit organization. The growing relationship between the WPP and the Radnor Township, we can say, is one of the reasons why we have been on such a positive and productive path over the last year and a half. So thank you. So back in January, when we were giving our last update, we stated that over the next, over the next six months, our main priority would be to work and, work to obtain our certificate of occupancy. We are excited and proud to say that as of Friday, we have officially received our CO. There have been questions asked of the WPP over the last year, two, or three, in regard to our viability and sustainability, and rightfully so. We're a young and growing nonprofit organization, and those questions are appropriate. That being said, we are more confident now than ever, since we have obtained our certificate of occupancy. The WPP will now have at least four plus more months during the winter to host revenue-generating programs and events that will provide significant resources to assist with the restoration of the Willow's Mansion and help us maintain and operate. This last year, the Willow's Mansion was essentially quiet from the months of November, from the months of November until March. Year-round access to the first floor of the Willow's Mansion, coupled with the amazing outdoor spaces, is going to be a game changer for us. Add in our growing relationship with Peachtree Catering, and we look forward with great excitement and confidence to a strong future at the WPP. The WPP is doing what we set out to do. We're working hard to restore this local treasure that holds so many memories, and we are doing this in order for our community members to continue to benefit and enjoy this township asset for generations to come. We acknowledge, we still have a lot of work to do, and we're not on the exact same path that was presented three-some years ago. Nonetheless, the fundamental mission and our goals are still the same, to restore the Willow's Mansion for community use. Through COVID pandemic and current economic challenges, we're still pushing forward and are extremely optimistic about reaching our goals. We need to continue to spread awareness about our nonprofit, and we are accomplishing this through social media, open houses, hosting educational programs and events, weddings, celebrations, fundraisers, and even features on ABC News like we had tonight during the 4:30, 4:30 broadcast. With our new CO, we now, we will now have so many more opportunities to show and tell the community what a great asset we all have in the Willow's Mansion. So since January, since our last update, a lot has happened, including obtaining our certificate of occupancy. So with the financial and supportive assistance from Radnor Township, there have been, there has been a new domestic water line and fire line installed up to the Willow's Mansion, and a sprinkler system throughout the basement, first floor, and second floors. Exit signs and lighting have been installed, and exit signs and safety lighting has been installed throughout the mansion. We also have a meeting planned for this Thursday with the township staff about the future security of the Willow's Mansion. Some other updates that has gone on since January, we have held, hosted over 25 public events and programs, including hosting Radnor High School's jazz band, and our first Health and Wellness Day that saw 18 classes and presentations with a focus on physical, mental, and emotional well-being. We've hosted over 10 private events, including memorial services, Girl Scout ceremonies, and school district meetings. This fall, we are scheduled to host an additional 13 more private events, including weddings and bar mitzvahs. We have added two more, two new board members to the WPP in just the last three months. We have also restored, there's some shots of bathrooms, we've restored two bathrooms on the first floor, making one of them ADA compliant. With the assistance from Peachtree Catering, we've added a 40-by-60 temporary outdoor tent that allows for added gathering space. We've taken over, taken over the payments of the PICO and Aqua, Aqua bills as of July 1st. We've repaired and maintained the air conditioning units on the first floor. We've repaired and improved the outside lighting at the Willow's Mansion. We've sealed the solarium roof. We've replaced windows in the billiard room, and we have begun painting the exterior of the mansion, just starting yesterday. So a lot has been going on, and a lot of, a lot has been going on so we can preserve the Willow's Mansion for generations to come, so it can be used. And these last, this last slide shows a lot of the usages that have been going on in the programs and events that we've been held. A lot of great events, a lot of variety of educational and community program that we're proud of to host for all ages. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Krista Hickson, our treasurer, for some financial updates.
Hello, and thank you. I'll keep my comments brief and then open it up to questions. This is a mid-year cash flow view of where we are, what's coming in and out. It's not an income statement. The major revenue items include, the first bullet on there is private event fees. With the check that I understand we just got today, we're actually going to be close to $60,000 in fees collected for private events. This includes usage fees, cleaning deposits, and commissions from Peachtree. It does not include security deposits. I did not add that because those go out as soon as the event happened. Donations are still critically important to us, even though I think what that first bullet shows or demonstrates is the success of the partnership with Peachtree, which is growing and evolving exactly as we envisioned. And private events were always intended to be a critical component of our sustainability. Donations are over 60,000. And then that third bullet is the township support. Thank you very much, the support that you've given us. This represents the invoices that we have submitted to the township to date. It's not the final, but we will be well under 200,000, which was the funding resolution to support the sprinkler system project. From an expense standpoint, the major outflow of cash are the two capital projects that we embarked on. The one was the sprinkler system and fire suppression, sprinkler and fire suppression system, and the other is the ADA bathroom project and bathroom renovation that we'll just showed a picture of. The other items fall into those three buckets, over 30,000 each, of renovation, restoration, and maintenance. That would include things that we're not necessarily capitalizing, the things that are in that first bullet, things, for example, like the replacement of windows in the billiards room, some of the exterior painting that we're doing. Programming and events is another big-ticket item for us. We invest a lot in programming and events. We feel like it's important to our relevance to the community. And then third is just operating expenses, and that can include everything from accounting fees, you know, professional services, and our donor management platform. I think those are the major bullet items. I mention here, just additional notes, we completed the third-party independent review of our 2021 financials, and I'm happy to provide that report to any of the commissioners. And then, as Will said, responsibility for utilities was transferred to the WPP effective the beginning of July, and that was always something that was envisioned in the lease agreement, that we would assume that responsibility, keeping with our commitment to alleviate the burden, the financial burden on the township. And then our fall fundraiser sponsorships are, it says on target, we're actually ahead of goals. So I'm going to open it up to questions, because I'm sure there are some. Yep.
Any questions from commissioners? Anna Marie?
I don't have a question as much as I have a statement of congratulations on certificate of occupancy, and all of the hard work you've been putting into the Willow's is definitely, you know, we can see the results. So congratulations.
Thank you. It would not have been possible without everybody sitting here.
Go ahead.
Yeah, again, I echo Commissioner Jones. You guys have really, I mean, what we see, this is exactly what we envisioned with the Willow's when, you know, a group originally came to us, oh my gosh, five years ago, six years ago, maybe, before I was even on the board. So this is exactly what we wanted to see. I know that you guys are moving forward towards the historical restoration, which, like, on a, you know, concurrent track with the events. I just have a quick question about the painting. So you mentioned the exterior painting. So how true are you being, are you trying to be true to what were the historical kind of colors, are there, is there even, is it even known what the historical colors are? What, what's your thought on the exterior and how you guys are doing that, to kind of keep that historic? that historic aspect?
I'm going to defer the question to Howard.
Howard Holden, the president of this organization. Yes, we are keeping it within the historic colors. You know, we've got the samples. You know, in fact, the colors we're choosing were chosen originally by Archer and Buchanan, who did the historic evaluation. So, yes, we're staying with that theme. It's the old mainline, bottle green trim, and kind of a vanilla stucco.
Great. I think that'll, you know, be important for people to know, because certainly we want it to be a community space, but there was the commitment to the historic aspect, so I appreciate hearing that. Yeah, I mean, really, kudos and congratulations, and congratulations on the CO. I know it's been a long road, kind of cut in the middle by COVID, and you guys have really shown, proven, I think, that you are resilient and, you know, a really viable 501(c)(3), which, in this day and age, is a tough thing to do. So, congratulations, and thank you for sharing this information with us.
Sure. And thank you to, again, to all of you, to the township staff, to the board that I work with, they're a terrific team. And last, I just want to put a word in for Erwin Leighton. It's the construction manager. They have been extremely cooperative in this project. Okay, thanks.
I just have a question about fundraising efforts. So, I know this isn't your, you know, your full audited statement, but just in generalities, you know, what are, are you seeing numbers of donors increase? Are you seeing the amount of each donation going up? Is it dependent on different types of fundraising campaigns? Can you just give a quick summary of your efforts?
Sure. The small and the large donations are important to us, and actually, as I walked up here and I looked at you, Jake, you asked a question last time about the number of different donors, and I was like, I should have had the exact number. I pulled it last time. I do pay attention to this number, and I believe the last time I looked, it's around 70 different giving units thus far this year, and that includes, I want to say, you know, seven to nine small businesses that have, you know, as an example, Mom's Organic Market gave us a $500 sponsorship for the wellness event. So, I include that in the number, and I include them as a giving unit, but it's about 70, and they range from, you know, small donations, $20, to larger donations. And we view events and programming as a critical part of our fundraising strategy. Last year, the fountain restoration wall was, it happened because somebody came to a spring concert. They looked at the fountain wall, the old fountain wall, and contacted Will and said, "We want to restore that fountain wall for you." This year, a woman that paid a very small amount of money to have a children's birthday party on our newly restored terrace in the back gave us a $10,000 sponsorship. So, we think that community programming and outreach is a critical part of our fundraising strategy, and that's not just our opinion, that's the opinion of many fundraising consulting firms that have offered pro bono advice to us.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioners with questions?
Thanks. So, I'm just going to look at those numbers, and I'm going to ask some questions, and then I have a couple more questions. So, if you take that private event fee, I'm just going to say $57,000, I'm going to get easy. So, there are deposits in there. Strip out those deposits, ballpark, I mean, is it $5,000, is it $10,000? And that number is going to go back and forth, obviously, when you get, what percentage of that is?
So, your question is, how much of that is deposits? I would say most of that is deposits for revenue, or actual usage fees. So, when we get a deposit and the event hasn't occurred, we ask for 50% deposit. Somebody wants to have a private event. They give us a 50% deposit on the usage fee. And we book that as deferred revenue, and then when the event actually occurs, we recognize it as revenue on our books.
Okay. So, then that should be approximately at the end of the year. I'm just, if you're forecasting, I guess my question is, and I don't know, because of COVID, and you guys have done a good job stewarding this along through COVID, but I'm looking, like, what is your anticipated total revenue for this year when it comes to your private events? And I'm talking, you know, your weddings, your bar mitzvahs, your big parties, not -- and I think some of the community stuff is wonderful. I just don't know if it's really going to pay those bills, so.
And our intent is not for the community stuff to pay the bills, that's to be of service to the community, and if you look at our events page, you know, we're trying to offer a variety of programming. But to answer your specific question, I'm, I mean, every day, somebody's contacting us, just today, Will let me know that there's going to be a bar mitzvah in September that we hadn't planned, so we'll get another deposit for that. I'm going to project that we'll end up around $60,000 to $70,000 at the end of the year in terms of private event revenue. We were a little over $30,000 last year, so that shows significant growth. It's going to represent, in terms of the major private events, I think we said 20, you know, our lease agreement stipulates that we can do 25. We'll probably do about 13 this year, and we're ramping up next year. We've already, we are already getting deposits for events in 2023, and we even have three for 2024.
So, about how many? Do you have an estimate for your fiscal 2023, what your revenues are going to be?
For next year?
Yeah, for what you have booked. What do you have booked so far for, from, you know, the beginning of January 1, 2023?
For January 1, 202?
To the end of?
My expectation is we'll ramp up to 25 major private events. And if we ramp up to 25 major private events, the contribution to our revenue on an annual basis will be over $100,000, and that will allow us to be less reliant on the donations, because there's always, within every nonprofit, there's ebbs and flows from year to year in the donations. But we want to, we've got a lot of, still have a long list of projects that we want to get done. And so, our objective is that the private event revenue covers operating costs, and we can take those donations and embark on a laundry list of projects.
So, and my worry, and then I'll hit my next point, is that $100,000 is great. You have, I guess, one full-time employee, and then you'll have donations of anywhere between $100,000 to $200,000. So, if you have a $300,000 total in net income, what you're paying, is it still sustainable as is going forward?
Yeah, I do believe it's sustainable.
And then, the other thing, just for me, when I read this, it's great that you have it up to the day, where it's August 12th, but it'd be easier, at least for me, if you had it from the end of Q2, so you can look at all the revenues, all the expenses, line item by line item, you know, over a six-month period, not over an eight-month, 12-day period. So, it's just, it's easier for me to understand, because I can't put, I don't know what's deferred, when this hit, when that hit, and everything. It's really difficult.
I did debate whether to do income statements or cash flow. With income statement, it can be hard for the layperson to read, because it includes depreciation expense. It actually includes depreciation expense from the roof project, so it doesn't necessarily represent cash coming in and out. I am happy to share with you the 2021 audited financials or income statements.
If you could just email me that, I would.
Sure.
I would love to see it. And then, just going forward, what are the next big, you said that the air conditioning or the HVAC system, that's good? Okay. Are there any other big, I guess you have your, as Jake Abel likes to say, your needs and your wants, so you need an HVAC system, but you may want to paint something or put a new window in, and that's going to be secondary. So, what, do you have a list of what needs to get done to keep this U and O and to keep everything going, and then what are, you know, what's that, you know, the list of, this is what we would like, we'd like to, you know, put a new chandelier in this room, or new tables, or do you have that? And I don't need those answers now, but you could share.
We do have, there are the line of sight, the immediate things we want to do, which is exterior painting, doing some of the exterior painting. We want to look at a kitchen renovation. We want to look at upgrading, you know, other aspects of the interior space, from the library, you know, to making some rooms available on the second floor now that we have the occupancy permit for, say, a bridal suite. So, there are a number of immediate projects that we want to.
And how long is the caterer signed for? How many years?
It is a three-year agreement that we're in the, it started on July 1 of 2021, so we actually just finished one year of the three-year agreement, and it's set to auto-renew, unless somebody says, "This is not working for me," it's set to auto-renew. But given that, you know, they're doing a good job booking events, they have quite the marketing engine, and that's beneficial to us. We're now booking events out to 2024.
And finally, I would like to invite you and the board to the next Parks and Rec meeting to talk about dogs at the Willow's.
To talk about the what?
Dogs at the Willow's. I've been asking and asking and asking, so please take this. As your formal invitation, to please come, if not the September meeting, but a meeting, because the last thing, and I've said this there, I do not want someone to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on a wedding, and they have an issue with someone's dog ruining it, so.
So, Mary Co. is.
So, I will zip it from there, but you guys are welcome, and I think I've made my opinion pretty clear about, and I think Skunk Hall is a little too close to the Willow's, but I'll.
If Mary Co. is listening, she's jumping up and down, saying, "Yes."
She's probably ready to strangle me, but.
No, she is very much in line with that concern.
All right, well, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions about future projects?
So, just to go on that line with the future projects, are any of those projects, are you going to come to the township for funding? At least what you forecast for 2023? Do you foresee coming here, asking to draw down on that 1.7?
Yes, but not this year. If there are things that we could anticipate coming to the township for, it would be things like, one comment that we've heard very recently from some folks that have had events is the lighting down to the parking lot. You know, when it gets dark, and you've got to make your way from the mansion down to the parking lot, it's very dark, and I think one time, you know, we went and bought a bunch of solar lights and put those out, so a stopgap measure. But as always, we would want to do that in consultation with you and make sure that, you know, we choose those projects wisely.
Okay. And, you know, Sean, I thought it was going to be more comprehensive in this questioning, so I didn't jump in early. He let me down this time. So, what's the, so out of that 1.7, what remains? What have you drawn from the township? I know we have the $133,000 up there, but, you know, out of the total, out of the total 1.7, what remains from that fund?
I'm going to direct that question to staff.
Yeah, that would be a number that we're tracking, and I don't have it off the top of my head. I don't know, Bob, if you have it, but, we'll have to look it up.
And then, when we passed the original lease, it was estimated that was going to be five years for restoration of the building. Where do we stand now in that estimated timeframe?
I'm going to ask Evelyn to address that.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you who I have not met before, my name's Evelyn McRaby, and I work with Cheshire Law Group. We've represented the WPP since their incorporation in 2017. So, I'm sorry, Commissioner Abel, what was your question regarding the four-year term?
No, no. So, when we originally passed the lease in 2019, the estimated timeframe for restoration of the building was five years.
So, by the language of the lease agreement, it's actually four years. It's to make commercially reasonable efforts to complete the plans and specifications attached to Exhibit A within four years of execution of the lease agreement, which was in 2019.
So, it's not a complete restoration?
So, again, the language of the lease agreement was very carefully drafted, because we understood that what was attached as kind of those dream plans, as Commissioner Farhi said, the, you know, wants versus the needs, that much of that was going to be dependent upon those available funds and the raising of those available funds. So, there are those items that have been addressed on that Exhibit A, both in Phase 1 and Phase 2, enough so that the WPP was successful in getting that Certificate of Occupancy, which is a huge benefit to that organization in order to maintain that stream of revenue for continued operation and maintenance. If you're looking at those plans and specifications that were, again, that dream project by Archer and Buchanan, I don't know necessarily if we have an end date for that, nor does the lease really require the WPP to fulfill those plans and specifications.
So, the current, WPP has some dream vision?
I think what the WPP's vision is, and obviously, I will defer to them on that, but it is to bring a community space to the community of Radnor for generations to come, and that's exactly what they've done. They've created a situation in which this building is now watertight. It's not subject to any further deterioration like it was in the past. They've made significant upgrades to make it ADA compliant, to have events both inside and outside, both for the community and for those private events, to create that revenue stream. They no longer are dependent upon the township for those utility bills, those are now being maintained by the WPP. So, they really have, by my reading of the lease, far exceeded the expectations as of 2022, as to where they should be in those commercially reasonable efforts.
Okay, but is there a plan? Is there a long-term plan on what the WPP wants the building to look like in terms of restoration?
Again, I'm going to defer on that to the WPP board. I think, again, in a dream scenario, if they were to have all of the donations come in and that operating revenue, that potentially, it would look much like those plans that were originally drafted by Archer and Buchanan.
And I'm just trying to get that final version, that the dream, that you would like, the vision you're working toward, there has to be a price tag associated with it.
We don't have a complete price tag associated with it. Our goal at this point is to take the existing house and restore it and bring it back to the public. That's our, that's our goal for the near future. You know, should everything flourish and people want that building to be more, and we have the money, yeah, we will start, you know, preparing a plan to make that happen.
So, where are you in the process of where you want to get to?
Our immediate goal, that satisfies the lease agreement, is to restore the mansion and bring it back to the community, and that's what our goal is, and that's what we're doing. We are not necessarily providing the plan that was suggested by Archer Buchanan at this time. Again, if things flourish and everybody wants it to be more than it originally was, you know, that's down the road. We can't promise that it's going to happen.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Howard.
Sure.
Just quickly, before you sit down, Howard, I'm sorry. Can I just ask? So, I'm sorry, I don't mean that. But as you guys move along, so with the consideration of, like, the exterior painting, you are trying to be true to a restoration effort. While you may not have the money to do everything that was put forth right now, as you guys are able to do things, so for instance, when you replaced windows or things like that, is that true to a restoration effort as well? Not necessarily like, "Oh, we're going to take out these windows and put in a modern window that doesn't even match," or something like that? Like, you're being true to a restoration effort, maybe just not on the grand scale right now that was originally presented, which was certainly a beautiful plan, but as you guys get more, as you said, Howard, you know, you have more, you know, funding or, you know, a very generous donor comes out and says, "I want to fund the whole thing," which would be amazing. But as you guys move forward with these smaller pieces, you are being true to a restoration effort?
Yes, we're being true to what it was when the township purchased it. At this point, we're not going to go in, I mean, there are windows in that building now that are not historic, but we're, our immediate goal is. are not historic. But we're, our immediate goal is not to go in and rip those windows out. Our goal is to restore the mansion back to the way it was when the township bought the project, bought the facility, and make it usable for today's usage.
Thank you.
Hey, Howard, one last thing. You mentioned security, or somebody had mentioned security.
Yeah, Will did.
Do you believe, or does Will believe, would, would the, would the WPP benefit from a security camera in that back parking lot?
In the back parking lot? Down the road, perhaps. Our immediate plans are security of the building itself. We do have a, you know, a ca, a security camera in the building, but we would like to add more. And that's the meeting we'll probably be having with the township on Thursday.
All right. Thanks, Howard.
Any other Commissioner comment?
I would like to thank you very much. I think what you're doing over there is great. The events and programming are really creative and are serving the community. I've seen the success. I've been to some. The concerts are wonderful. So really appreciate what you're doing with the mansion. I appreciate that you come in front of us and make sure that we are up to date and get to ask you all of these questions and, and walk away. I feel we walk away satisfied that you are absolutely transparent, and that's, I'm very grateful for that. So thank you for all you're doing.
Madam President, if I could real quick, just a couple of follow-up items on that discussion. Two quick ones. So first of all, the, the 1.8 million that was originally allocated by the board, without getting down to the transaction detail level yet, we're at about 950,000 left of that. That includes the allocation of the money for the sprinkler system. So that's the ballpark that we're in with the funds left in that. Steve Norsini is working on the engineering side of the, the repavement of the, the roadways through the park, which was part of the township's obligation when the contract was adopted. That could include discussions about lighting and, you know, parking lot security, which leads me to the second item, is that our police department spent some time with the Willows Park Preserve leadership, or at the site, and did an evaluation. And that's what we're meeting on later this week to go into detail about what that might look like. And then we'll come back to the board with the results of that and what the recommendations for the next steps are.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you all. Moving to item, sorry, B. This is ordinance 2022-11 for adoption, amending the Radnor Township Code regulating the distribution of single-use, carryout plastic bags. Is somebody going to lead us in? I can lead us in. So at the last meeting, we had the introduction of the plastic bag ordinance. We have heard from the community. I think I can speak for commissioners. We've received emails and outreach outside of the meetings. The Environmental Advisory Committee did a wonderful job putting together this ordinance. I think we are in, we're in line with the way that our region is moving. For those of you who don't know, we were prohibited from addressing the issue of plastic bags by a state law that sunset and then allowed municipalities to make their own decisions on this topic, which is why you're seeing a lot of momentum here in Pennsylvania at this time. So I would ask for a, I'm going to move if I'd ask for a second, please, and I'll open discussion.
Second.
Thank you. Is there anyone on staff who'd like to speak to this? Okay, we'll go right into it. Is there any Commissioner comment?
So I would like to make a motion to amend. So since we introduced this, I've heard from our friends at the, the Wayne Food Pantry, and they have a concern about the way, you know, they currently distribute some of the food to the, the patrons that come to the pantry. And they do use, you know, recycled plastic bags. And they were concerned that, you know, that might be something they, you know, that they might become, you know, might become illegal under this, I guess. So I talked with Margaret, and we also talked with John Rice, our, with the solicitor. And I'd like to propose amending just the definition of commercial establishment. So adding a sentence at the end that says, "For purposes of this chapter, commercial establishments shall not include bazaars, festivals," which I think is in there now, "just add food banks, food pantries, senior citizen centers, or similar meal centers operated by nonprofit or governmental organizations or religious institutions."
Commissioner, can I just jump in here? Because I was muted before.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Farhi, we can't hear, I can't hear you.
Is it on? So I, this is, and, and I appreciate that. I really do appreciate that you're trying to help these people. But there's a deeper issue here of the people that don't have SUVs, that these transactions, they're business decisions. And it's not just nonprofits like the Food Pantry, which they do wonderful things, or Story Services or whomever, but there are people that, that are shut-ins, or people that take public transportation, or people that are living paycheck to paycheck. And I said this before, that this is a, and I don't know, everyone has their own formula inside their head of what, what we do and can they afford it or not. So again, I, I think that you need to look at, if you're going to look at nonprofits, you need to look at individuals. Individuals. And individuals that don't have, that may or may not be as lucky and affluent as the people on the board. So that's my comment.
So I, thank you, Commissioner. I think you're, we're sort of conflating some issues, so I'd like to take them one at a time. If I'm hearing a request for an amendment, a motion to amend, can I hear a second? I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Okay. So if we can just, I, I will move to the issue that you raised, Commissioner Farhi, but I'd like to address this one, because I don't, I don't, I think that they, yours is larger. Yours is a bigger issue. This is about whether or not we'd put the nonprofits in as a, in the definition of commercial establishment.
And I hear you. Thank you, Commissioner Maroni. But if it's bad for the gentleman, what he said with Penn Medicine, or the Penn, Penn, not Medicine, Penn Environment, if it's bad, then it's bad, right? Then, if it's dangerous and bad, then it's bad. Then either ban it all, right? But don't pick and choose. Now you're picking and choosing. You're picking favorites because someone called you, you know, in the 11th hour and said, well, this doesn't work for us. There are a lot of people that it doesn't work for. And a lot of people have contacted me and say, it doesn't work for me. Maybe they are someone struggling, a mom, a single mom. Maybe it is a small business. So the fact that, the fact that we are now picking and choosing, I think, I think defeats the purpose. It defeats the purpose of this.
Commissioner, we need to get through the amendment. It's now been moved and seconded. I'm going to take a vote on whether or not we're going to add this amended language, and then we will open it up for the issues that you want to talk about. So we now have, we.
Well, we have to vote on it. It's a point of work. You're going to cut me off.
Yes, we have to vote on it, and we will be taking public comment shortly. So I have a, an amendment which would, the language from Commissioner Borowski would essentially add in other nonprofits who deal in some sort of food, so a food pantry, to the definition of commercial establishment, or it exempted out, pardon me. It would not include nonprofits dealing in food, like a food pantry. So that's the amended language being proposed. Do I have a, we got the second. I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. And the motion passes. So now I would like to address the ordinance as amended. So everything is the same as was introduced last time. The only addition is the exemption for something like the Wayne Food Pantry or a similar organization. So Commissioner Farhi, would you like to speak to the amended?
I would like then to make another motion to exempt people that honestly feel that they can't afford it.
So this.
No, I mean, I mean, what can we, if, you can add that in.
Okay, do I hear a second?
And I'm fine with it.
I'm hearing a motion. Do I hear a second?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Can I get a second?
Okay.
So people that can't afford it, that they're on the honor system.
So.
Let's vote on it.
Okay. I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion fails. Okay. So I need to make a point of clarification. This is not an ordinance that is addressing individuals. It is addressing businesses. So we exempted a type of business due to their nonprofit status, but it's the, the ordinance is directing businesses not to provide single-use plastic bags. So you can't exempt somebody who can't afford it. They are not the ones that the ordinance is directed to. Is there any other comment?
Yeah, I mean, I have a bunch of them, but, I mean, and, and I'm happy. No, this is a business decision that you're putting a floor on a plastic bag for an individual. And individuals, me and everybody in this room, I don't know what I'm going to be doing at a certain time. I don't know if I'm going to be taking public transportation, have an emergency, and not have enough money in my pocket to decide what I have to pay for if I need multiple bags. I get the environmental.
But you can bring your own bag and you pay nothing.
But if, but if you are in a situation.
But if you bring your own bag, you pay nothing.
Commissioner Maroni, please let me finish. You said I could speak. But if you are in a situation where you're on public transportation and you don't bring your, your reusable bag and your aluminum straw and everything else where this is gearing toward, and I, then, you know, you're, and you're a single mom and you're struggling to get home and you're struggling to make bus fare or train fare, it hurts you. And that's my point. And it's easy for me to say, because I have a car. I have an SUV. That's all I'm saying. So you shot the motion down, but I think that if you step outside your shoes and step outside Radnor, and we look at some of the people that, I hate to say it, that sometimes are less affluent and are struggling and may work for us, okay? They're the, hopefully not minimum wage an hour, $7.50 an hour, maybe it's bumped up. They can't afford it, especially with inflation and, and, and other rising costs. That's my point. And I think that we're overlooking this, and we're only looking at it from our view, and we're not taking the view of someone that is struggling. And that is my point. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comment?
Sean, I would just, or Commissioner Farhi, sorry. I would just like to make a couple of comments. One is that New York City been banned for years, and everybody walks everywhere. People have learned to take these tiny little bags that fold into themselves, and you put it in your bag or you put it in your pocket, and that's what happens. The other place is Bar Harbor, Maine, which has done it for years. It's a town, it sounds rich, but it is a town that clears out in the winter and is really on the edge. And those people are so proud that they have no single bag, plastic bags. Everybody uses reusable. I mean, you just don't see anybody going to the grocery store without a reusable bag. And if you have to, you screw up, you pay 10 cents for a paper bag. The one time in 10, it might happen.
I mean, these are great examples, but these are your examples. These are examples of a, and I've been to Ogunwud, so I know Yorktown. I know that area at Bar Harbor. And New York, yeah, they walk, they walk everywhere. But again, you're looking at it just from you, and it's, it's apples, it's, it's apples to oranges. But then, I'll just ask for this. Can we make that 10 cents ba, that fee? Can the, can the business pay for that fee? Can, can it come out of the business? That's what I want. And I know that, and I would like to at least make that amendment to have the, the, the add-on, because I did speak to someone from the Wayne Business Association, who's a restaurateur, who said that they're going to see a 10-cent charge at the end of their bill when they get a bill. They're going to spend $500, taking their family. They're going to see a 10-cent charge. And that, he said, for some reason, if they had a bad bill, if they had a bad meal or it was marginal, that's going to affect their waitress's or their waiter's tip. He said it could. And he's like, that's just terrible. It's just one more thing that, you know, that is going to upset a customer. So if we can extend that 10-cent fee until this time next year, I would be fine with it. Or if you can let the businesses pay for that, I would be fine with that, too. Or you're going to come up with something else, like, like boxes. They're just going to have cardboard boxes. I have a million cardboard boxes. People are going to go to the post office and just grab three cardboard boxes and put their stuff in there. That is awesome.
I would encourage the grabbing a cardboard box and using that.
And they'll use it once, and then it'll go on the recyclables, just where the paper bags go.
And it's better than a single-use plastic bag. I think that's the point.
Doesn't the ordinance, doesn't it take six months? So the ordinance, once we vote on it, it's six months before it goes into effect?
That's fine. Then, then I'll make a motion to have it go for a year.
So.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion.
Can I just finish my point before you, you're making motions like over top of everyone's to be.
Commissioner Farhi, I'm going to let Commissioner Borowski speak, and then I would like to talk to you about your motion and hear it spoken clearly, so we can vote on it. Thank you.
And I think, Commissioner Farhi, the point that you're making, that I think came from one of the restaurateurs. I spoke with the same person as well. I think that what we said, because for a restaurant, it's the idea of, I've come to a restaurant, oh my gosh, and now I haven't finished my food, and now I need a bag, and I didn't bring a bag because I didn't anticipate not finishing my food. I think that the idea was made that, so there is an opportunity for people to come for a waiver, and that, that could be something they may want to come for a waiver for. So, am I correct, Commissioner Maroni? I think that's how it ended.
Yes, there is an opportunity to seek a waiver, and I'm not finding the section right now, but I know it's in there. And I think that the restaurateur reached out to all of us has already been given that information.
Just reconcile with me. So if you go wear a nice suit to a nice restaurant, say, like a nice steakhouse, I'm not going to, there's a nice steakhouse here in, in Radnor. I mean, I got to come in if I'm wearing a suit and tie with my reusable bag in case I, to take food home for my dog?
So.
I mean, is that, is that, is that where we're at now? That's fine.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah. I mean, I carry one. I've got one in my purse right now. So if I were to go out to dinner tonight and not figure.
No offense to any restaurant that serves steak.
But I would also add that, you know, they don't, we're not banning food containers that you typically get in a restaurant. So the last restaurant I went to, and they could have given me a bag, there was nothing stopping them, I had a plastic container, and I took it out. I put it in my reusable bag, but they just handed me the container. There was no bag in this exchange. That is perfectly acceptable. It happens now. I think people who go to restaurants are fine with walking out with a container in their hand, because they're only just going to their car or catching a bus or whatever it is. So I, I don't think that the, the, for the few people who have a leftover meal at a restaurant and forgot a bag, it is enough to, like, take out a fee that has so much evidence that has been provided to us. We heard from the gentleman from Penn Environment, but you also were emailed and in the packet tonight is a long list of research that was done on that issue. And it really is, it's change management. It's not about making sure that the business, you know, doesn't spend more on bags. It's, if you don't have the fee, the businesses will invest in the paper bags and the heavier plastic bags and just give those out. And it doesn't solve the problem. So the problem is a behavioral issue that we want to encourage the residents and visitors to our community to be better for the environment. We want them to act smarter. They want, we want them to think ahead and, and care about the greater good. It's, it's a mechanism that has proven to make these ordinances much more successful in the numbers. Nothing is perfect. There's no way to get into change behavior of another human being and, you know, bypassing an ordinance with a fee. Somebody is dead set on having bags, they're going to do it. So this is, you know, it's, it's behavioral change. It's helping out a little bit with the businesses that might see an overhead cost increase, and now they can make themselves a little bit closer to neutral. But that is not the main driver.
Just one more comment, and that goes to the Penn Environment. I know that this township spent a lot of money on Ready for 100. We spent about, or we at least budgeted for, what, close to $30,000? Is this part of that? Or, or were you paid by the EAC, the Penn?
I'm, I'm going to ask you not to ask questions of people in the audience who are not at the desk. So.
Well, no, this is actually, no, no, it's a very important question, because if he was not contracted by the. by them and he didn't have any standing, then he should not have spoke during public comment because we didn't allow the other people to speak during public comment.
We could, yes, we can, we can, people can speak in public comment. He came up before this issue.
Some of the Cratum people can speak during public comment because they didn't live in the township or they didn't have business in the township.
That actually never happened at a board meeting. It never happened at a board meeting. It didn't happen at a Board of Commissioners meeting.
Okay, it didn't happen? Okay. All right, thanks.
Well, just to clarify on that, I think Sean is right that if you're not a member of the community, you shouldn't be speaking in public comment. But President Mulrooney did allow non-residents to speak at the abortion conversation. So, so I, I think.
I have, I have never held it to be Radnor.
I think she was fair tonight in allowing it.
Radnor people only. I have not as a president and that's, I've been consistent.
But, but I, I share some of Sean's concerns with, with the directive to charge at least 10 cents. I don't like that, you know, especially for some of the businesses that are already not using plastic. Now they're having to show that they're charging 10 cents for it. I'd prefer to see that go away as well, including the line item on a receipt. It brings in enforcement issues and I foresee some problems down the road with that. But the amendment that we passed tonight, that's now my biggest issue. This is a plastic, a single-use plastic ban, but the list of exceptions is starting to grow. So at the end of the day, when this is all said and done, what's the overall impact that Radnor is doing? You know, how much, so the amendment tonight, how much, how many single-use plastic bags are we allowing back into the environment, which is what we're here to try to resolve and take out of the environment? So I think it's counterintuitive to what the resolution's trying to do. I don't see the, I mean, if we're banning plastic, single-use plastic bags, just ban them all. Otherwise, you know, I don't know.
When's the last, can I speak finally? Sorry.
You can, you can speak when my comments are done. So I don't know what we're trying to, I understand the intent. I don't think we're getting there. And I don't know if we're playing favorites. I don't know if it's cherry picking. I don't know if it's, this person, this business called me, so we're going to, we're going to put it to a vote. And I don't know what the process is and who else is going to request a waiver. So how is that list going to end up? So I, at this point, I'm not going to support this ban because it's not a ban. It's, it's a partial ban.
So when's the last time you've been to a food pantry? And are they handing out new single-use bags or are they using reusable bags? Can you answer that, Jake?
I haven't. I was, I think in Commissioner Borowski's comments, she had mentioned that they were using single-use plastic.
Well, because they get the food donated in the single-use plastic bags and then they give it back out. So they reuse the bags. Have you ever been to the food pantry and seen their operation?
Which, I mean.
The Wayne Food Pantry. We only have one in the township.
Actually Highland has one.
Excuse me?
Highland Avenue has one.
Well, so then this would help them as well.
I've had one, Commissioner Borowski. I've had one by the church, but sorry, sorry to interrupt.
Okay, so they drop off the food in the bags and they reuse the bags. So there's, they put it in a brown bag and then they put it in a bag with handles because to Commissioner Farhi's point, many of the people are walking there and then walking back. You know, I've been there and one day I helped somebody load a bunch of their bags in my car and drove them to Highland Homes. So, you know, there's people who are using them and then it makes it easier for them to take the bags with the handle. So they're reusing these bags. And they were concerned that that reuse would be deemed as something that was not allowed under the ordinance. So it's not like they're buying a bunch of plastic bags and giving them out, for instance, as a larger store might do. They're reusing bags that are given to them. And they want to phase these out. So, you know, I had said at our last meeting, maybe the township could buy a bunch of reusable bags and maybe we could put them in places where, you know, they are either distributing food or, you know, serving meals to, you know, seniors or the nonprofits and then it's something that the township has contributed. I don't know if our staff has had a chance to look into that or what that cost might be. But, you know, I think it, it, right now is a way, I mean, as Commissioner Mulrooney said, we're looking to phase it out. Like, nothing is going to flip a switch and this isn't going to change. But if we don't have something to get started, then nothing is going to change. So this is a change agent, as she said. And, you know, the, the food pantry will start to adapt and start to change as well. But for right now, you know, giving them this opportunity to still be able to distribute with the bags that they take that are donated to them with the food that is donated, I think is, you know, is a reasonable amendment. And certainly, it may be something that we can phase out in the future. I mean, the idea, I think, of this ordinance as well is that it, we will continue to amend it and hopefully add more things that we are trying to take out of the trash stream and that are damaging to the environment. So this is a first step. And I think that what we want to do is make sure that we're not leaving anyone behind as we move forward with this.
Commissioner Borowski, I'd like to, I agree with what you're saying. And I've worked with Noah's Ark at St. Mary's as well as the food bank. And the majority of people who use the single-use bags, first of all, they have been used multiple times. Very rarely do I see anyone, you know, even throw away a bag. Sometimes they come back with their bag. So people are very vigilant of, of that process, especially at food banks and a place like Noah's Ark. So that's why I would definitely support that amendment. And secondly, we're being so doom and gloom about this. I think it's such a wonderful thing that we're doing. And, you know, there are shifts that have to happen. So a 10 cent, you know, fee is something that is not there to punish someone. It's just helping to create that behavioral change, which then, you know, delineates to a cultural shift. So I think that we need to give it a try as a community. And it does work. It's worked in many sectors of community, or many, many communities throughout the country and the world. Secondly, there are incentive, there are positive incentive programs. So there are programs at Whole Foods, at Trader Joe's that, you know, if you bring your bag in, sometimes you're given the 10 cents. You know, there are multiple ways that businesses can explore to incentivize their customers. And maybe there are ways, there's a way that we can sit down or have someone sit down, the EAC sit down with different incentive programs to help incentivize customers as they come in and bring their bags. So it doesn't have to be doom and gloom. It doesn't have to be looked at, perceived as negative. I think that it's something that should be supported by everyone. I will certainly be supporting this. Thanks.
Are there any other Commissioner comments? Do we have public comments?
Hi, Lisa Halliwell. I'm one of the EAC members. I just wanted to thank the Board for taking this up. I just wanted to clarify something really quickly. I think it's moot now that the amendment has been approved, but nonprofit organizations are already within that, you know, shall not include language. So I don't actually, I think it's a redundancy, but, you know, it's done now. So that's fine. And I also wanted to point out for anyone listening who may not have read the ordinance really closely, that we do also have in here an exemption. So any business, any commercial establishment that believes that they will be presented with an undue hardship can get that one-year allowance before this ordinance would apply to them if they apply to the Board, you know, for like a special circumstances of undue hardship. So I just wanted to point that out. So if you do hear from other particular businesses who maybe, you know, I want them to know and I want you all to know that that's in there already for specific businesses like the Wayne Food Pantry that, you know, might need that extra support. But anyway, but aside from that, I just wanted to clarify and I just wanted to thank you all for taking this up.
Sorry, just one quick question. Thank you for your work. Look, I'm going to vote for it. You know, I just have a lot of concerns. That doesn't preclude a business from having, you know, like a take a penny, give a penny.
That's exactly.
So I could have a take a dime.
Yes.
Give a dime jar. Every restaurant, every business, just a jar full of change because people don't want it anymore. They round up, they could throw it in. So essentially, fine. If I can have a take a penny, give a penny, a take a dime, give a dime, then I don't have to pay for it. That's, and they can still pay for it. Fine. Then fine. Problem solved.
Thank you for bringing that. That was actually the other point that I was going to make, that there could be a take a dime, leave a dime. I think people would be very happy to contribute dimes to the Wayne Food Pantry, for example, or other businesses like that.
No, I'm talking retail businesses.
Or retail businesses and, you know, you know, as part of the outreach that we do at the EAC, we could also encourage people that if they have extra reusable bags, you know, bring them to the businesses if they are, you know, opening, open to redistributing them in that way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Are there other comments from the public?
Just to piggyback on what she just said, I mean, not only reusable bags, but people can donate, you know, yeah, well, yeah, exactly. I'm sorry, I'm thinking something else. Forget it.
Hi.
Your turn. Thank you.
Yep. My name's Gillian Norris Santo. My address is 424 Inverary Road in Villanova. I just have a very brief statement. I'm president of the League of Women Voters of Radnor Township this year. Oh, is this on?
Can you move the mic a little bit closer? We've got some new audio equipment and we're all kind of struggling with it tonight.
Gillian Norris Santo, Villanova, president of the League of Women Voters of Radnor Township. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Radnor Township, I'm speaking in support of the, of the ordinance. The purpose and goals of the ordinance align with the Radnor League's longstanding position on protecting the quality of the environment, which reads in part, "We support protection of the environment, which includes adequate air, ground, and water quality measures, floodplain controls, recycling programs, quality of life issues, and methods to increase citizen participation and education in these areas." That's the end of our formal position statement. Eliminating or reducing the number of single-use plastic bags will improve ground and water quality and will reduce the air pollution caused by the incineration of discarded plastic bags when trash is burned. We endorse the ordinance and support its adoption by the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I will call the, yeah, come on up.
We would just like to make a really quick comment. We are a part of Radnor High School's Action Earth and we are in full support of the plastic bag ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other comment? Okay, I'm going to call the vote on the ordinance as amended. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Ordinance passes five to one. Thank you, everybody. I really want to extend my gratitude to all who really rolled up your sleeves, engaged in this in the EAC. There was a lot of work that went into it. It was very thoughtful. I do agree with Commissioner Jones. This is, this is something to celebrate. I think we're, we're really pleased to be a part of the effort to do what we can to address climate change and pollution and all the things that we know that plastics have, give us. So thank you, everyone, for your work and thank you to the Commissioners for passing the ordinance. Okay, we will move on to Resolution 2022-93, approval to enter into an agreement with Amanda Holt for the 2022 redistricting project in the amount of $4,500. I'm going to ask, well, do I have a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
And I'm going to ask Commissioner Myers, can you lead us in a little bit, just some, some information about this?
Sure. So Amanda Holt, who was involved in the last redistricting process and is familiar with the township in redistricting in general, met electronically with Jack Larkin and myself and Jake Tribe, but we had a lot of technical issues getting that call together and, and ended up just on the telephone and it was, it was nightmare. But anyway, we got it done. And she is very willing to help us with this process. A process that's always fraught with a lot of political issues. And I think she can look at things cleanly and give us some advice and get us started.
Thank you. Is there any Commissioner comment? Anything from staff, Bill?
No, just to emphasize that the amount is below the township manager's threshold, but given the nature of the discussion and the contract, we all felt it best to give it full transparency and have the Board vote.
Thank you. And I think I missed a comment from Commissioner Abel.
Yep, thank you. To Commissioner Myers' point, I apologize for not being on that call. I tried, did my best. It was not, it was not, it was not easy. $4,500 is not a huge expense. Like, what, what are we getting for $4,500? Is there, is there a set number of hours? And what are we expecting at the end of it?
I, I think that question was addressed to me.
I think so. Do you have the?
Yeah, it's in the Board packet. I'm just having a little. There's a scope of work in the Board packet that lists dated July 20th, 2022. Commissioner Abel, I don't know if you've seen this, but.
I don't see hours. I see, you know, four in-person meetings.
Right.
Five sets of revisions, in-person, one in-person meeting to obtain additional map instructions.
I mean, I'm a little bit familiar with Amanda Holt's work. I was here when she did that last time for Radnor. She actually did a redistricting last time around. So she presented, and I think her proposal is to present five sets of revisions, have in-person meetings at the end of the day. She's also going to do a legal description and a map of the wards as they get adjusted. The criteria is pretty general for wards. I mean, that's what the state law is. There's a, I think, less than 10% discrepancy between wards in terms of population. They have to be contiguous. And she spells that out. But number of hours, I don't know what the number of hours are, but.
It seems, it seems like a lot of work for $4,500. Do, do we expect that, I mean, is this final or is there, would she be able to revisit and ask for more during the process?
She can. It's, it's, she has any additional services or requested changes not included above will be charged at $150 per hour. My, you know, having not been part of that call, my understanding is that this proposal was prepared after a discussion, at least with Jack, on the expect, the anticipated outcomes. So she, again, without having Jack here, I'm a little bit of a disadvantage. But my understanding is, is that this proposal was prepared after that conversation with the understanding of what the, the ultimate outcome is, is desired to be. So based on that, and I can tell you just based as a matter of fact, that this is very consistent with the proposal that she did for the township last time she did this, back in 20, whatever that was, 14, I believe. Plus, plus a little bit more for, you know, the inflation over that time. So it is consistent with what she charged the township in the past.
Can I, can I ask a question? Can we add a not to exceed? I mean, if this is extremely low, Bill, what did you have it budgeted for?
So this wasn't an item that was specifically budgeted, so.
Do you know what it was 10 years ago?
Less than $4,500.
So then can we say $4,500 not to exceed $7,500 and then we have to come back? I mean, does it sound, sound reasonable?
So can I just respond to that? Instead of doing that, and keep in mind what Bill, Mr. White just referred to, is that he has spending authority up to $7,500. He brought us here.
But he wants to make it transparent.
Because it's a very important and political issue. So capping at 75, it could just be that once we've approved it, he could then approve incremental increases based on the needs of incremental increases based on the needs of the project.
But the whole point of him bringing it to the board was he wanted it to be transparent. So, why don't we just say there's not a separate vote?
But he'd have to be here at $7,500, is my point. But he would have to come to us on anything at $7,500. So, you're putting the cap that's already there.
All right, say $6,000 or whatever, just, all right, whatever.
Madam President, just if I could, my recommendation would be, if the board agrees, is to adopt this at $4,500. If during the process it becomes obvious that more costs are gonna be needed to finish it, that the committee that is overseeing that process ask Amanda to revise that quote, and it comes back before the board.
Are we comfortable with that? Okay, I'm comfortable with that. Any other commissioners wanna speak?
Can I just ask, so I know our new GIS coordinator started. Will he be involved in this process as well?
I think, you know, given, given the nature of the conversation, staff is trying to stay out of the mix. Amanda brings those GIS, the GIS expertise that is required to do the mapping. In a pinch, if there is a technical question, I'm sure David would be happy to help, but for the meat of the discussion and the, you know, the actual drawing of the maps, we've asked Amanda to do that.
And will she then, so once we approve this, will she give us kind of a schedule and an outline of meetings? You know, there's a lot of people in the community that want to be participatory in this process. And Maggie, if you can speak to that for me?
Yeah, she's well aware, and it's not a real schedule laid out in this proposal, but she realizes the need for a public forum, and we will end up with a proposed map. I mean, there are gonna be some issues for us to decide that are sort of, you know, important issues, and then she'll take that information and go, once we sort of have our roles and goals.
Any other commissioners wanna speak to this? Is there any public comment? I'll call the vote. Wait, did I move it? Sorry. Did I move this in? I did, sorry. I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Thank you. We will move on to Item D, Discussion and Direction on the 2023 Budget Calendar. Mr. Tate, can you take this away?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, as part of the annual budgeting process, each year, administration will put together a calendar, helps to guide us and helps to keep us on track with pulling together all the various cost elements that go into the budget, and also kind of lay out the process in general. And we come to the board to present that calendar and also to, in a sense, get your blessing on the process that we're gonna go forward with. The one exception I do wanna note is that we do have on here for September 26th, a possible special budget meeting. That's actually a holiday, so the board already does have regular meetings scheduled for the 12th and the 19th. So, the 26th will be, will be taken off of this calendar. We will include September 12th as a regular board meeting. But again, this is really just a formality to kind of keep the board aligned with administration's process and timeline for pulling together the budget and all the elements and all the parts that go with that, the timing for presenting it on your agenda from preliminary to final, and having this adopted along with any corresponding changes in any of the various rates that have to be considered. So again, just for your review and for your blessing, so to speak, with the one exception that will make the date correction on the September meeting.
Would you be suggesting a different date, as is possible, or we could schedule as needed? I'm just recalling past budget seasons, those extra meetings were very helpful.
We absolutely are open for special meetings as needed at the board's discretion and timeline as to what suits the members of the board for presenting, whether the budget in total or special components of the budget that need special attention, at your discretion and your desire.
Excellent.
If I could just add to that, typically what happens is, at the township manager's recommended budget, usually we call out some of those bigger items for additional discussion. That's usually when we decide, you know, at what meetings we wanna really dive into those issues, or any other topics that the board wants to get into. So, you know, looking at the calendar, that would be the, at September 19th, at that meeting, those items would be identified, and then we could start carving out dates from there.
So, if you do want a lot of participation, September 26th is Yom Kippur, so I will not be here in the meeting.
So, Sean, you must have been off the dais. They've taken that off the calendar. Any other, any other comments from commissioners? I think we have a sense of the board that this calendar looks good, and we will add meetings as necessary. Am I seeing some nods? Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Tate.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, Ordinance 2022-09, Introduction. This is amending Chapter 263 Trees, Section 263-6, Emergency Tree Removal, revising Section 263-6C to apply to hazard trees on private property of public concern, and revising the process for removal of hazard trees. Mr. Foster?
Yes, thank you, Madam President.
Would you like to talk to us about this?
Yes, yes. We brought this to the board a few months ago, in regards to all of the situations or, I guess, calls that I was getting to try to address hazardous trees on private property. And a lot of it was becoming a problem to try to mediate between neighbors. So, I work with the Shade Tree Committee, and we have Seth Reiser, the chairman of that board here, and also work with the township solicitor, Mr. Rice, and also Mr. White, to try to work through the language. And it brought us to this point. This is the amended or the revision that we came up with, taking out some of the language that was causing a problem. So, that brings us here, and if there's any questions, Mr. Reiser can also answer those, or Mr. Rice.
Thank you. Before we get to commissioner comment and questions, can I get a motion?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any comment from commissioners?
I have questions with this, but... So, if a tree is on a private property, and it's a tall tree, and it could fall into the street, but it's not a budding parker, anything, but it's dying, the arborist can say, can go in the middle of, say it's a 50 or 60-foot property, he could go in the middle of that property, they have the right to go on there and take that down after whatever documentation they would give to the homeowner?
Are you speaking of only this one, if it's on private property?
If it's on private property.
Only if it affects a township park, or maybe a public area, say where there was a school bus, or somewhere where the public would gather?
How about a street? Or a sidewalk? I mean, I just, it's, I know it's tough, but you're gonna, I mean, it's like you don't wanna get neighbor disputes, you may wind up getting more, so...
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if it's every street in the township that we wanna try to tackle.
No, I'm just saying, but if a tree is dying and it could fall into a street, I mean, that's a private, that's private property. Or that's public property.
Sidewalks on here. Sidewalks on here. So, adjacent to areas of public use, including but not limited to streets, sidewalks, bus stops, and public parks.
So, they can, so, we could theoretically have an arborist walk, I could have an arborist walk my property with? I mean, I'm sure you would let the homeowner know, but they have the right to enter, enter the ground to the property to look?
Yes, I mean, I would reach out to the resident first to address or let them know what the concern is that we're having, and that would bring me to their property, and hopefully everything would go smooth, and they would be okay with it.
Sean?
God bless you. All right, thanks.
Sean, we would, Sean, we would always get permission first.
If you didn't get permission, and then someone shows up, or the homeowner's gone, you got a couple people, like, walking around their property, I'm just...
I think, I think the township always seeks permission. I mean, there are, there's been some situations where we haven't been able to get permission. We have the right to go, go into court, depending on, you know, how hazardous the tree is. We had one tree that was over public road a couple years ago. I mean, literally over, I forget which street it was, Rick, but... Conestoga. Conestoga Road. It was a serious issue, and there was a dispute between two neighbors as to whose tree it was.
How about a...
But it got resolved. It got resolved.
How about a power line? Would that be considered a public use? They're over a power line separating two, two property lines, but there's not a street?
Yes, if there's a tree that could fall, hit a power line, I think we retrieve it, and it's hazardous.
Okay, thanks.
I mean, the key is to get the arborist to sign off on it.
And the ordinance as amended, has the arborist providing a copy of the report to the homeowner, correct? So, I think there's, there's conversation and negotiation happening just even by that request, that they see the report and understand the hazard of the issue. Are there any other questions or comments from commissioners?
No, I just wanna thank the Shade Tree and Seth Essier, our Chair of Shade Tree. They worked really hard to rework this language. They're slowly working through some of the, I wouldn't say trouble spots of our ordinance, but some of the things that need to be updated and addressed, and they're doing a great job. There's always a lot of really good discussion, and it's a really thoughtful process that they have, and the collaboration with Mr. Foster and Mr. Husbek, our arborist. So, thank you for your work in getting this done.
And do we have any comments from staff?
Yeah, just real quickly, I'd like to echo that thank you to the Shade Tree. I know Ricky will never admit it in public, but the language that is being amended has consumed a great deal of his time trying to be an arbiter between two neighbors on a tree. So, by getting Ricky out of those situations, we're actually allowing him to do a little bit more public work, director work, which will be good for the department. I think it'll be good for engineering, too, a little bit more collaboration. So, I do, I am very appreciative of that. It's hard to quantify the time that was being spent on those issues, but they were just about daily during the summer months for the last two years. So, this is a huge improvement, and we appreciate Shade Tree's work and cooperation, and hopefully the board's support as well.
Thank you. I don't think I introduced, so I'll ask for a motion in a second. I'll move. Mr. Farhi, seconds. I will call the vote on, oh, sorry. Is there any public comment? Thank you.
A quick one, Dan Burnham, 414 North Bellevue. I'm new to this revision. Does it just deal with trees that are in imminent risk of falling and damaging or hurting? Because there are, at this time of year, many intersections now with overgrowth of plants on either side of an intersection blocking vision of the road? And is there something, as a citizen, I do to have that foliage cut back? Or is it just talking personally to the homeowner, or...
I was about to say, I'm gonna say that Mr. Foster over there is gonna be the man with all of the answers to those questions for you.
Yes, you can call Public Works. My extension is 195. And I'll come out and take a look at whatever areas are of concern.
Thank you.
I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Thank you. Congratulations, Ricky. See, the next, I'm still getting used to the microphone, I apologize. It beeps a lot. So, we are now moving to Item F, Ordinance 2022-13, the introduction for the removal of the handicap space in front of 248250 North Aberdeen Avenue. Can I hear a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Norsini? No, is this the chief?
Chief.
Hi, Chief.
Hi, doing ma'am. Commissioners, this is a vacated property that had a handicap resident who used the parking space, so we would like it removed. The neighbors have been very conscious about it. We've done our due diligence. There is no need for that space to be reserved for that. So, shortly, the Public Works Department will remove the sign, and they'll gain one parking space in the area.
Thank you very much. Is there any comment from commissioners? Is there public comment? I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Ordinance 2022-14, Introduction, Approving the Agreement of Sale for 26 Wentworth Lane. May I hear a motion? I will move. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Maggie. And Mr. White is going to present on this item. Thank you.
Yes, and while I'm getting set up, so as we're all well aware, the new audio technology has been installed, and we're all enjoying the beeps. We've asked the manufacturer on if there's a way to mute those, or, so stay tuned on that. The other element, I think Molly had sent an email earlier tonight. Just close that. So, some of the control features, the, whatever magic happens that, you know, sends a signal to these projectors, is on back order. We won't get that till January. So, until then, these types of presentations from the administration will have to happen here, with the good old-fashioned 1980's RBG cable. So, let me just step into this really quickly. This ordinance proposes that the township would acquire the property at 26 Wentworth, and the goal of acquiring that property is to address public parking. No, don't do this to me. So, this is not a long presentation, I just got a couple slides. We're gonna touch on the specific area. Describe the problem that we're trying to solve, how this will be funded, and what the next steps look like. So, the area that we're looking at is in Garrett Hill. Here's Conestoga. Here's Garrett Avenue. You've got Wentworth here, and the property in question is immediately behind the commercial establishments on Conestoga. So, that's where the property's at. And so, in the last two and a half years, it has been a consistent theme in this area of the township where parking is a problem. And the most obvious issue is that all of the parking there is private, and there's not a lot of land, not a lot of space. So, with no public parking, there's, we do not have the ability to use shared parking, which is a lot of what is used in the Wayne area to help those businesses out, being that you have both restaurant and retail use there in Garrett Hill. That demands higher parking in our zone, zoning codes. And again, without a lot of space and public parking, it's difficult for those establishments to satisfy those zoning requirements. So, what this is aimed at is, well, let me back up even further. So, as these discussions have matured over the last couple of years, and it kind of came to a head this spring when we were experiencing regular towing issues, folks going to pick up dinner and parking in front of another establishment, they would get towed because they were parking in private parking. So, we started brainstorming different ideas that might help address this issue. We had talked in various conversations about options. One of the options was approaching the business owner, Mr. Bages, across the street with his commercial development, if there is an opportunity for shared parking there. And that discussion was had. It's not a feasible outcome, but what did come out of that conversation is, you know, given the private parking that's on Williams, if there was an opportunity... if there was an opportunity to buy the Wentworth property, you would have a large parking field that kind of connected those two properties behind the commercial establishment. So as timing and fate would have it, the Wentworth property was in a state of flux. So we reached out to the current owner of the property and asked if there was any possibility he'd be willing to sell that to the township for the purpose of adding parking, public parking there. And they were. Rockwell was open to the concept. They have worked with us to get us to this point, which is the ordinance that's in front of the board now, to acquire the property, to address or to install a parking field there. This is a sketch that we had our engineers, Gannett Fleming, prepare for us. At this time, it just contemplates the Wentworth property as its own standalone lot. We've also talked about trying to combine it with the private lot next door, either making it all public if the owner of that property was willing to do so or just joining them to improve traffic flow. Those are the next conversations that we'll need to finalize and obviously bring back to the board. But as proposed tonight, if this were to be just this property by itself, it would accommodate 17 public parking spots and provide immediate parking relief to all of the commercial establishments right next door. In terms of pricing and funding, there's two different elements here. The ordinance that's in front of the board tonight is for the land acquisition at $573,000. The funding proposal there is to use general fund reserves today. Obviously, this is an introduction tonight. The adoption would be considered after a public hearing on September 12th. At that time, we would also, Mr. Tate is working with bond counsel on a reimbursement resolution, which is, for those commissioners that have been with us for a few years, you might recall, the reimbursement resolution gives us the opportunity at a future date, if we were to borrow money, to reimburse ourselves for an expense incurred in the past. So it's basically the commissioners making its intent known that you intend to reimburse the general fund for that acquisition at some point in the future. If, when that day, if and when that day comes, you know, our financial position dictates that it's not necessary, then you don't do it. So really, that reimbursement resolution just provides the board with a little bit more financial flexibility. Again, if and when we have a future borrowing to, we would add the $573 to that borrowing and then reimburse the general fund. The second component is the actual lot construction. If the board approves the purchase of the land, shortly thereafter, we would be back to the board asking for permission to engage the engineers to do an actual design. They would take that sketch and turn it into a set of engineered plans. And then we'd look to fund the actual parking lot installation then in the early parts of next year, with the understanding it'll take the engineers a little bit of time to engineer things or to put those plans together. So in terms of next steps, what we would like to do is, the time in between tonight and the public hearing on September 12th is do a direct mailing to the neighbors that outlines what the proposal is and offer them an opportunity to meet with us, ask questions, and get an idea of, again, what the plan is. And then get input on buffering, traffic flow, you know, those types of neighborhood-specific questions that we can incorporate into what we ultimately ask the engineers to put together. And that will include talking with the commercial establishments and the residential neighbors in that area. So if introduced tonight, that'll be the next step. Then we would come back on the 12th of September for the public hearing and consider the adoption. Then in October, we would come back to the board with the final parking options. Hopefully, at that point, we'll have, we'll have something to come back to the board definitive on, you know, whether we're joining the other property, if there's, you know, other arrangements that might be possible there or not. At least then we would have a plan and we could ask the board for authorization to engage the engineers to put the design together. And then the rest of the plan just follows through on, you know, including the parking lot with next year's budget. Then early part of next year, we're going out to bid once the doc, the engineering's done. And then, you know, when the ground thaw is, begin the construction and installation of the parking lot. And that's it. So happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much. I would first like to just express my gratitude. I think it was a very creative solution to a problem that I think we all know. Whether or not you live in Garrett Hill, it's very hard to park and go to places in Garrett Hill if you don't live there. So really appreciate the effort that you and staff have put into it. I am very, very much in favor of this. I will open it up to, is this, we're in for a vote, right? So.
Introduction.
This is an introduction? Okay. So I will open it up for questions to Bill. Anyone? Commissioner Myers?
So it is one expensive parking lot. You know, you're looking at basically a quick thing of $100 per week, per parking spot amortized over 10, $100 per week, per parking spot amortized over 10 years. That's, so that's one issue. I mean, I'm for it, so, because I know how tight Garrett Hill is. But the other is stormwater. You know, you're taking what is now trees and grass and the house has actually been knocked down, I heard, and going to be paving it.
Yes, so let me, I'll address both of those in reverse. So first of all, stormwater is included in that $270,000 price for the improvements. So we would manage that site in compliance with the stormwater ordinance. In fact, it's part of the reason why it is so expensive. That's the, one of the bigger chunks of those costs. So yeah, we are addressing that in that estimate. And then it is expensive. Unlike the Wayne area, we don't, we don't have the benefit of land share agreements. In Wayne, we have an agreement with the Wayne Presbyterian Church to use part of their property for public parking, same with the AT&amp;T lot. So, and we're just not as fortunate in this area to have those large parking fields that we can access. And then this is a, I mean, really, we're looking at it as a forever plan. So hope, again, thinking of those agreements we have in Wayne, those were entered into back in the 50s and so we're benefiting from those even today. So 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years down the road, it's anticipated this will still be a public parking lot. And that's really the horizon that we're looking at. Otherwise, yeah, if it was a profit center, it's probably not a recommendation we'd be making, yeah.
This is a pay lot?
Yeah. Yes, so the thought on the paid lot is that it would be consistent with the ordinances that we have in terms of the cost per spot for the same time as it is in the other areas of the township. Ultimately, the commissioners will have say on that. You can adjust it and we can, this can have its own set of, its own set of rules. But going into it, our thought was is that we would be consistent with this lot as we are the others.
Comments from other commissioners?
Well, I really want to hear from Commissioner Farkey on this one. I do.
Well, there's the cost to do this, as you said, Commissioner Myers, and there's a cost that if you don't do it, that you do have a failing business. So I think that you should do that. Thank you, Bill. I think the board will, I think the community will welcome it. The neighbors are going to have some questions, the way in, the way out, curb cuts, working with the community. And this parking lot, while we're saying it's forever, it may not be. If there's another plot of land, and I know several of them, that may change ownership in the near future. There are a lot of mom and pops that live there, so, or pardon me, that have businesses there. So if you could do a swap, you know, you have a couple of mechanics and they're, you know, they could work forever. I know Ken Norsini will work till the, till he's 95. But if that ever, you know, changed, maybe you would flip that or do something. But it also states how much a piece of property is worth in Garrett Hill. And I think a lot of people underestimate Garrett Hill and the value in the community. And that's a pretty, you're right. I mean, the vacant lot is pretty expensive and the homes that they were going to put up there were going to be somewhat pricey. And then the last thing that I would like to say is that that's going to get used for other, other things, too. There are parades, there's tree lightings, there's events, there's spillover. Bages' lot, when you drive by it, is always full if you drive by at 10 o'clock in the morning, so. Thank you for looking at that, Bill. There'll be some questions if you need my help with a meeting.
Sure.
Happy to help you.
Sure. You brought up one thing that I think's important to mention that I should have, is the timing of things. So, you know, this property wasn't going to be for sale forever. We heard the proposal at the last board meeting, what this property was going to be used for. And the owner was going in that direction and was willing to work with us in a very defined period of time to try to get to this point. So I know normally these kind of larger concept decisions take a lot of time. And we're just not in a position with this property for that. So that's why it's kind of gone from concept to an ordinance in front of the board quicker than most of our conversations. Any more time and we might have lost the property, so, or we would have, quite honestly.
Other commissioner comment? Do we have any comments from the public?
Yeah, I will.
You're okay. Nobody's rushing.
No.
Oh, there she is. There is coming.
Oh, I, I was confident there would be one. It's all yours, Mrs. Bill.
Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue, is the only other Garrett Hillian here. The first thing I want to say is I'm very glad that their letters are going to go to the neighbors, not only on Wentworth, but Summit and also Williams, to have a meeting because I think they're going to have some opinions. As it was when it was DeFleese's development into a parking lot and then Lingo's development into a pair of houses, there was cutting back of curb cuts and taking the back corner of Rita's All Seasons for the entrance. And also the exit, one of the questions I would want to be considered is how is the traffic going to exit from here? Because I know, because I lived there, there are dumpsters that are perpendicular to the driveway behind the deli, Zesto's, whatever they call it, and the Chinese restaurant. So there is not a direct cut through. There are big dumpsters there for, because they have to put out their trash. That is part of that problem. That's a pretty narrow driveway. And there is no real way to come in from Conestoga Road to any part of this parking lot. It's quite narrow. So that would be, as a Garrett Hillian, and I have to say, I have no skin in the game. I live at the other end of Garrett Avenue. I'm a celiac, so I do not go buy food there. I don't drink because I'm a celiac. I mostly stay home. But I think it's very important, based on the history of Garrett Hill, that the residents, all the residents, but most particularly those on Williams and those on Summit and those on Wentworth, have an opportunity to speak. There is, has been very serious stormwater issues, not affecting the Wentworth people as much as, because they back up to the houses on Williams where they had severe flooding and they still have flooding. When you get a storm, you see quite a lot of water that pools on Williams Road because it's sort of sagging to the left a little bit. And so that, I hope that those things will be discussed in detail and that the residents will have a chance. And I do agree with Maggie, that's a hell of a lot of money for a parking lot. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? I'm going to call the vote. All in favor, sorry, wait.
Was there a motion?
I heard a beep.
A motion in a second?
I thought it was, but we are, I couldn't remember how I had. Is there, I thought I did. A motion?
Yeah.
And a second?
Peggy says yes.
Okay. Thank you. I was very confused on that one. I appreciate your patience. I will now call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And we look forward to next week, next meeting. Moving on to item number H, Resolution 2022-95, authorizing the payment of change order number 19 to RoadCon Inc. for pavement marking removal for the Tap Trail project in the amount of $17,981.21 to be funded from the remaining 2019 general obligation bond proceeds. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Norsini, can you tell us about this?
Thank you, Madam President. So this work was completed actually well over a year ago on Bryn Mawr Avenue. What was on the plans didn't match what was in the field. So the contractor had to do extensive pavement marking removal. This actually should have come to you in one of our larger Tap Trail packages. It did not make it in there, so apologies from our department on that. And so this work is done, has been done for over a year. And this is actually the last, the closeout item for the project, except for, and I get a chance to say this. So some folks have called me about the trees that were planted on the Tap Trail. And I just want to let everybody know, fully aware of them, they've been inventoried by our arborist. But under the PennDOT requirements, we can't plant trees after May. So we've inventoried the trees that did not survive. They will be replanted. So other than this, come fall, there will be a replacement of those existing trees. That should be it for the Tap Trail. But people are using it, which is great.
Thank you very much. Is there a commissioner comment? Yep.
I just have a quick question. What is pavement marking, I mean, I'm not sure quite what that means.
So on Bryn Mawr Avenue, in the area of the trail spur that goes behind Cornerstone, there was what we call white gore markings, white, single white lines, double yellow lines. So they literally come in and grind them out. And there was considerably more than what was noted.
Any other comments from commissioners? Is there a public comment? Call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving to item I, Resolution 2022-96, authorizing the award of the contract for hydrologic and hydraulic analysis for the Earl's Lane culvert replacement project to Garrett Fleming Incorporated in the amount of $41,000 to be funded from the Stormwater Fund cash balance. May I please hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. And Mr. Norsini?
Thank you, Madam President. So, and if the board recalls, the Earl's Lane culvert has to be replaced. And there's a couple of variables that we want to analyze with that. So instead of just awarding the contract for the design and replacement of, along with the permitting, we want to make sure, A, I narrow their scope down, I, there being Gannett Fleming's, because I think the proposal would have been too large if we didn't do this and too much variability. So what the purpose of this is, the Earl's Lake Dam was partially breached about, I don't know, a year and a half or two years ago. That has caused some concern for the four homes between the Earl's Lake Dam and Earl's Lane, i.e. this culvert. Also, in Sawmill Park, there is a very deep switchback in the creek, right? It doesn't flow straight through. It does like a 90 S. So the purpose of this is to analyze the flow and see if, normally, we keep culverts at the same. at the same size, we don't change their size. Um, in this case, we wanna know if that's the way, the correct way to do this. So this H&amp;H analysis is going to look at, okay, if we keep it the same size, how does that affect the residents between the culvert and the partially breached dam? Uh, how does it affect the park? If we increase the size, does it assist the people between the Earl's Lake Dam and Earl's Lane? We don't know. You may think it does, but it, it may or may not, that's why we need to study. How does that, if we make the culvert larger, how does that affect the park? And more importantly, anything downstream? So the, the goal here, if it so pleases the board to award this contract, we will take the data from this, and then apply it to a design and permitting contract with Gannett Fleming. So as opposed to having them do all this in a design contract, we're gonna nail this down now, and then we would come back to the board and say, we'd like to submit a design contract for replacement of the culvert at this size, existing or larger, something like that.
Thank you very much. Is there any, um, commissioner comment or questions? Any public comment? I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Great. Passes unanimously. And, um, we are on to ordinance 2022-15. This is an introduction, amendments to the 2005 stormwater management ordinance. Um, may I hear a motion?
Still moved.
And a second.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Norsini?
Thank you, Madam President. So in your packet is 147 page, uh, it's a couple documents. I, I'd like to step through each of them, uh, this evening. But the manager's telling me no, so I won't do that. Uh, no, so, in all, I apologize for, for gestating. Uh, so the, the background on this is, uh, earlier this year, spring, the county said to all the municipalities, you need to update your stormwater management ordinance, and you need to do it by the end of September, because you're gonna submit your MS4 permit, and we wanna know that this was done. So as part of that, uh, there's, they gave us a model ordinance, and I don't, by no means expect anybody to read through this. Uh, so we have a model ordinance that also we made changes to. So the goal for tonight, and I'll step through a few of the more salient points, the goal for tonight's meeting is to get the board's approval for the solicitor to advertise it. If the board does approve that, uh, at the manager's direction, I will then provide the board, the manager, and the public with a slideshow noting the various changes to the ordinance, more so than when that was in the memo, a little deeper dive. So that's, that's the goal for tonight. But I would like to note to the board, uh, what was in the memo, there are some changes, I, I think they're, they're very material. So in what's in front of you, there are, currently, the stormwater management ordinance has three categories. Zero to 500 square feet, you do nothing. 500 square feet to 1,500 square feet, it's what we call groundwater recharge, a pit is appropriately sized, it's filled with stone, runoff goes in there. Over 1,500 square feet, we do stormwater management, which has many different components. In this ordinance, in the model, uh, those limits change. Zero to 500, it's voluntary. 500 to 1,000, you do the infiltration. Anything over 1,000, you do what we call full-blown stormwater management. So 1,000 square feet, 50 by 20, for scale, it's like a four-car driveway, alright? Uh, but there's also a few things in here, I think, which will make a really big impact on our residents. First of all, decks, whether they be wood, or I'll use some brand names, Trex or whatever, so long as there's a space in between the decking boards, would no longer be considered impervious. So, that is something we get, uh, grading permits on all the time. We'll have, you know, they'll have to put stone underneath it, like you usually do, because you don't want weeds coming up anyway. So, that is a huge item, I think, that will be beneficial to our residents, especially residents that are just expanding a deck, or putting a new deck on. That would not include a stone veranda or patio, right? They're impervious. This is just decks. Also, in our current ordinance, you know, people will call me and say, hey, I have a stone driveway, that's, that's pervious. Uh, it's not. We don't consider it as impervious in our ordinance. And in reality of, it should be, because the car's compacted, and, and it does become that. But in this ordinance, an uncompacted gravel area with no vehicular traffic is considered pervious. So if somebody said, I would like to put a, you know, little stone area, whatever, outside the back of my house, and, you know, put whatever out there for entertaining, they're not gonna get dinged for that, right? I think that's another, that's another big point. Uh, one of the huge things of this is, it allows a lot more, uh, options for a designer or a resident to provide stormwater management. I don't know if you may recall, we had a gentleman here that was, uh, for a single home in Commissioner Abel's ward, and they could not infiltrate, and they were, they came back four times. And each time, he was noting items from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection BMP manual. And we're like, that's great, but that's not in our ordinance. This heavily relies on that BMP manual, as it should. It gives a lot of options, a lot of common sense options, uh, as well as different ways to deal with stormwater. Um, the total horizontal projection of all ground-mounted and freestanding solar collectors, so on and so forth, uh, the area under not that, underneath that would not be considered impervious, so we don't want to disincentivize someone to put up a solar panel, uh, as opposed to just on the roof. This is another large one. I, I think, so, you can look at this as a gross and net square foot area, but I think what's easier for, for everybody to understand is credit. If you remove impervious surface, right now, we disincentivize you to remove impervious surface, because we say, that's great, thanks very much, but it doesn't count for anything. Even though we show it on our grading permit application, it doesn't count for anything. So in this way, if, uh, we actually had a resident come in here several years ago, she had a very long driveway, and she was putting in a new driveway. And she said, well, you know, it's really a swap, because I'm gonna remove the old driveway. Well, according to the ordinance, it isn't. And she said, well, you know what? I'm gonna leave it in. Why am I gonna spend all this money to remove it when I still have to do stormwater management? So now, we will incentivize you to remove impervious surface. Maybe it's a wash, you remove 400 square feet, and you put in 400 square feet. I mean, that's fair, and that's a common sense thought. Uh, manage released concept, this is another thing from the PA DEP BMP manual. Uh, it's just a different way of storing and releasing stormwater. Uh, I talked about the manual. Uh, trees, and also, now this is a little different than what we have now. Uh, for every grading permit that, uh, is for, for full stormwater management, our solicitor's office puts together, uh, an agreement that states that the homeowner has to maintain that, and we have the right to inspect. And if they don't, we make them do it, and if they still don't do it, we could lean their homes. This is a little different, and I left this intentionally blank in the ordinance, uh, we can require a deposit after the construction of the stormwater management facility, uh, to defray future inspections. So we could say, uh, not only does the solicitor's office create this agreement, but we want $100. That's gonna go into this fund, uh, that if resident X did not do the work they had to, we actually have a fund to draw off of to go do it, while we try to get the money back from them. So, those are some of the highlights, and again, at the manager's direction, I'll put something together in the next week or so, that'll be posted on the website, provided to the manager, of course, and yourselves, getting into a much deeper dive. So the goal tonight is to, if it so pleases this board, to authorize the solicitor to advertise the ordinance. We will be back at the meeting, first meeting in September to introduce the ordinance, and then subsequently, the second meeting in September, hopefully for adoption.
Um, so just a, a quick question, just based on the agenda, it's listed here as an introduction. Are you telling us that this is just laying the groundwork, and introduction is next meeting?
True. This is just to get the ability to, uh, have the, the solicitor advertise it. We will physically go into the whole issue at the September 12th meeting.
Understood. So this is not an introduction, it's just directing the solicitor?
Introduction.
Introduction.
Introduction. Authorizes the advertisement.
Okay, sorry. Thank you for clearing that up. Okay, any, um, comments or questions from commissioners?
I'll be brief. Um, and I'll be honest, I didn't read the whole thing.
I'm a little hurt, sir.
Yeah. Uh, well, you spent a lot of time on it. Um, two quick things, uh, just from what you said. So you said if it's like 500 square feet, you don't have to do anything. So then my, my question is, is, when is it 500 square feet? Is it over two years? And, 'cause people could piece, A, they could piecemeal the project, and then also, um, when properties change hands, how does that affect that? And then, again, with your deposit, if it's $100, again, who keeps that money? When do they get the deposit back? I know it's, if it's $100, it, it still may be material in a agreement of sale, or a bill of sale, if someone has money. So if you could talk about the piecemealing of time, as well as a change, and dealing with changing of ownership when it comes to, um, I could go on with rain gardens, but you, you already know my feeling about that.
So current, the current ordinance does have a one-year look back, so people don't piecemeal. This would have a three-year look back, right? And the whole, the whole goal of that, and I actually spoke to Res about this, is so somebody does not do, just as you said, 500, 500, 500. Because in the end, we have 1,500 square feet of new impervious, and that's an issue. So it's a three-year look back. Uh, as far as the mechanism for a deposit, so you, you don't get your deposit back, right? That's there in, like a sinking fund that the finance department, Mr. Tate, would create, so that we have the, we have this money to go in and do things. So, it's not like a Coke bottle deposit, where, okay, if I give it back, I get it back. Whether, in the sale of a home, my, my recommendation would be, if we have received a deposit for X, you know, tulip drive, it stays for X tulip drive. That would between the, be between the buyer and seller, if the seller says, hey, I want my $100 back, buyer, you know, give it to me, but it would stay in that fund.
Alright, then can you change the word from deposit, maybe to fee, so it's a little more, uh, 'cause that was confusing to me. 'Cause if it's a deposit, people are gonna expect it back, and...
I will check, so that was language from the ordinance, I will double-check that. And if that's, and if that's, if that can be changed, we will.
Okay. Thanks.
Um, I just wanna say, thank you for the impervious credit, removal of, uh, for the credit. I, that's something that people said to me, my gosh, when I was first running, five, six years ago, so, um...
Heard it from a few hundred.
I think that's an excellent addition. What's that?
Only a few hundred and several dozen commissioners.
I think that's an excellent addition, so thank you very much for that, and thank you for the comprehensive memo where you laid it all out for us, so thank you.
Other, uh, comments from commissioners? Is there public comment? I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you. That concludes the business agenda, and we are moving on to reports of board liaisons. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the boards and commissions that they are liaising?
I'll just, uh, speak of two, as I go pull this up. Uh, two things coming up, uh, locally. Uh, one was the change of date for the night at the ballpark, that's postponed until August 24th. Uh, feel free to reach out to Tammy Cohen or the Parks and Rec Department, if you want a team. Uh, and then the other is a, the unity in our community block party, which is Saturday, August 27th, and that is on Highland Avenue. Uh, and feel free with that, um, I have information on my site, I know a lot of commissioners have put that on there. And again, you could reach out to, um, pretty much the township, or I believe Reverend Howard as well. So, um, uh, yeah, they're, they're good times. I, I may, I'm gonna do my best to make both of them, but, um, unfortunately, my, my summer's booked up, but, um, they're a lot of fun events. And there're fireworks that night at the ballpark, still. Bill, there's still fireworks?
Uh, yes, as, that is the plan as of right now.
Okay, perfect.
Are there other reports from committees, boards, commissions? Okay. Moving on to new business, is there any new business?
It's old business, but, um...
Sorry, um, well, any new business? No, any old business?
Yes, Commissioner, or, pardon me, um, Steve Norsini, um, can you give us an update on the county line road quarter? Because I've gotten a couple questions, and I have seen, I, I heard, I actually saw, um, that there is a traffic light post that has been installed, so, do you have a timetable of what's going on? Are there gonna be road closures? Anything that could kinda help out, uh, the community?
So, there's still one pole enmaised arm to be installed, and they're actually pretty quick. I mean, the, the, the lane closure is, is literally for like, an hour or two. So that will occur, and then what has to happen is the actual, you know, the signal heads, the lights have to be attached. And you may recall that the right-in, right-out on Roberts wasn't to be constructed until those signals were functioning. So, uh, based on our last communication from Pinoni, who represents Lower Marion, this is still all to be done, uh, by the end of this, by the end of August, and with the concrete to follow. So, from, from what information we've had, uh, I would say sometime in September, the project should be done.
Cool. September. End of September?
Yes, I think that's safe.
You're being very optimist now, but it's been a long time coming. Thank you.
And just on that, on that issue, um, I asked you this offline, but for the benefit of the public, can you talk about, um, sort of traffic control when a light gets put into a space that there's not been a light before?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. So, when those lights first go, goes up, when those lights first go up, the term, they are bagged, literally they have like, you know, plastic around them. And then, uh, once we get the okay, they're gonna go on flash, and this is all done with PennDOT. They are there, we meet with them several times. They're gonna go on flash for about a month, that warns, uh, the motoring public that there is a light, you don't have to stop yet, but it's flashing, it's coming. And then after that, we meet with PennDOT again, we literally step through every phase of control, and then the lights start to go on. And that's when the, uh, somewhere during that process, the right-in, right-out islands would go in.
Thank you. Um, any other old business? And, uh, final opportunity for public participation?
I'm gonna ask the question. The EAC, put up Dan Burnham, who I've sat here very patiently and witnessed this meeting tonight. I understand he had his interview. Have you made a decision as to whether he's to join the EAC or not?
I think Dan's gonna be the first person who hears about that, so I will, um...
Okay, yeah, so...
Thank you.
As long as he's gonna hear.
Okay, any other public participation? If not, I will move for adjournment. Do I have a second? Thank you, Sean Farhi. We are adjourned.